Very good. So now I will call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. And the first item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to turn my camera. I don't know if you can see.
Yep, there we go. We got a flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this both with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, I will turn, which is approval of minutes for the March 3rd, 2021. Meeting, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Time out for a minute. Some of the selectmen are still muted.
I went around and gave everyone co-hosts. I didn't realize from the public hearing they needed it. So if you don't have it and you need it, just message me or wave your hand or something, and I'll give you co-host.
I think all the selectmen have been unmuted.
Yeah, I think so now.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Rick. All right, we'll go back. Approval of minutes for March 3rd, 2021.
How many votes do we approve the minutes for March 3rd, 2021?
Thank you, Jim. Is there a second? Seconded by Rick Schar. Any changes, errors, or omissions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item, under Acceptance of Agenda, we do have a guest tonight, and I'm going to ask that we move new business number eight up to number seven. An old business would become number eight. Our auditor, Mike Van Deventer, is here tonight, and I would like to be able to have him present before all of our other businesses completed. So if there's a motion to approve the agenda with that one change in scheduling.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a second?
Us.
Second.
Seconded by Rick. Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is Communication and Correspondence, and the presentation of the auditor will happen at this point. Mr. Van Deventer, hi.
Good evening. Nice to see everyone this evening. Again, my name is Mike Van Deventer, and I'm a partner at Mahoney Sable, ultimately responsible for overseeing the audit for the town and issuing the reports on behalf of the firm. Also joining me this evening is Heather Seetman. I think she got your initials HRS out there. Heather was the audit supervisor on the audit, ultimately responsible for really the day-to-day execution of our audit work. So as in the past, I will go through a presentation. Hopefully, everybody has received a copy of the reports that were issued in connection with the current year audit. Again, we'll not go through detail through those reports, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. And again, as I cover it in the presentation, I may address any questions that you might have as well. So with that, I will share my screen and pull up the presentation. Okay, can everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes.
All right, so as far as the scope of work, again, we did perform an audit of the town's financial statements, and we performed that audit in accordance with, again, both the auditing standards issued by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, as well as the government auditing standards issued by the Government Accountability Office. Based on the level of funding that was received by the town, we did also perform a state single audit in accordance with the State Single Audit Act. The town was not required to have a federal single audit this year. Your total federal awards expended was approximately $700,000. So that was below the $750,000 threshold that would require a In addition, we do also perform an agreed-upon procedures on the end-of-school-year reports to be filed with the State of Connecticut Department of Education. In addition to those audit and test services, we do also perform some non-audit services for the town. Again, we do assist in the preparation of the financial statements, the schedule of expenditures of state financial assistance, and the related notes. We also assist in converting your governmental fund financial statements to your government-wide financial statements. In order for the firm to be able to perform these services and remain independent of the town, management is required to accept responsibility for those services. And ultimately, Tom, as the Director of Finance, has accepted responsibility for them, and we can confirm our independence with respect to the town. In connection with our audits, we do issue a number of reports, and again, the main report is the report on the financial statements. We did issue unmodified opinions on your financial statements. And again, an unmodified opinion is expressed when the auditor concludes that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America as established by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Again, our opinion does provide reasonable assurance that the town's financial statements are free of a material misstatement, whether due to error or fraud. Again, we do not provide absolute assurance. We do not test every transaction, but we do design our audit to be able to provide a reasonable level assurance, which again is a very high level of assurance. In addition to the report on the financial statements, we do also issue a report on compliance and on internal control of the financial reporting. It's always important to point out here that we are not actually expressing an opinion on the town's compliance with laws and regulations, or on the effectiveness of the town's internal control. Essentially, during the course of performing the audit, if we identified a material non-compliance of a law regulation, or a significant deficiency or material weakness in your internal controls, we would be required to include it in this report. And again, we did not report any such matters. In connection with the state single audit, we issue a report on compliance on an internal control at the state financial assistance level. In this report, again, we do actually express an opinion on your compliance with your major state programs. For fiscal year 2020, the total state financial assistance that was expended by the town was about 6.4 million. The majority of that is considered exempt from our testing. The portion which is considered not exempt was about 1.6 million. The major programs for the town was the Open Choice Program, your municipal grant aid award, as well as the Town Aid Road Program. We did issue unmodified opinion on compliance over those programs, and again, we did not report any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses over grant compliance. And again, for those major programs, the main compliance requirement is allowable costs. So we do do a significant amount of testing to make sure that you are spending those awards in accordance with the program requirements. I think I'll pause here and just ask if the board has any questions regarding the overall scope of work or the reports that were issued before I move on to the financial highlights.
Are there any questions? I don't, I don't think at this point, Mike. Thank you.
I was actually, as I was putting the presentation together, it looked very similar to prior years. So that's a good thing for the town because again, we didn't have any significant issues as part of the audit. In terms of the financial highlights, this slide goes over your budgetary highlights for your general fund. Again, your original budget did provide for the use of fund balance in the amount of $300,000. Your final budget did include additional appropriations of $610,000 for authorized capital projects. So that did result in a planned use of fund balance of about $910,000. Your actual use of fund balance was only $461,000. Again, your revenues were about $164,000 less than budgeted, and your expenditures were about $613,000 less than budgeted. And we did not identify any budgetary compliance issues in connection with our audit work. This slide goes over your governmental fund financial highlights. Again, the town's combined ending fund balance is totaled approximately $10.7 million, which was a decrease of about $4 million from the prior year. I will talk a little bit about what caused that decrease. In terms of the overall fund balance, your general fund reported a fund balance of about $6.7 million, and that is a decrease of about $412,000 from the prior year. That decrease does reflect your planned use of fund balance in overall budgetary results for the year. Your capital project fund has a fund balance of about $648,000. That comprised the majority of your overall decrease in your governmental funds of about $3.8 million from the prior year. And again, that decrease does reflect the use of bond proceeds that were received in fiscal year 2019 to fund authorized capital projects. Your capital non-recurring fund has a fund balance of about $2 million, which was an increase of about $433,000 from your prior year. And again, that does reflect the budgeted transfers in, which were offset by your current year capital outlays. And then all of your other their funds had a fund balance of about $1 million, which was an overall decrease of about $171,000 from the prior year. In terms of unassigned deficit fund balances, always important to kind of point those out. For the town, I know you're aware, obviously, of the deficits within the Sewer and Water Operating Fund. As you guys continue to work towards addressing those deficits, again, just need to point those out to the board. This next slide goes over your governmental, or your government-wide financial statements on a full accrual basis of accounting. So this includes all the assets of the town as well as any related debt. The government-wide financial statements really focus on your overall long-term liabilities. The town is reporting an overall unrestricted deficit in your net position of about $4.7 million. Again, that deficit really incorporates your long-term liabilities for pension benefits, and those are being funded over time through actuarial determined contributions. In terms of looking at the status of your pension plans, the town in the police pension plan had a net pension liability of about $10.2 million. That overall plan is about 66% funded, which was about a 0.6% decrease from the prior year. And again, there were no significant changes in your overall actuarial assumptions. So no significant changes in the funded status of that plan from prior year. In terms of your volunteer firefighters' plan, that has a net pension liability of about $824,000. That plan is about 31.6% funded, which was an increase of about 2.9% from your prior year. And again, the town only began funding that plan a few years back. So that percent funded is lower than your defined benefit plan. And again, no significant changes in actuarial assumptions were noted in developing the net pension liability for that plan. So before I move on to the last section, which is our required communication, again, just trying to provide you some overall highlights in terms of your financial statements. There is a lot of information within the financial statements. Again, certainly encourage you to go through those, and if you do have questions, we'd be happy to answer those at any point in time during the year. All right, so I will move on to our required communications. And again, these communications are really geared towards when the auditor runs into significant issues during the course of performing the audit. So again, I am happy to report that these communications are brief. The first item here talks about our responsibilities under our auditing standards. Although we do assist in the preparation of the financial statements, they are the responsibility of town management. All of the information was provided by the town. In terms of the plan, scope, and timing of the audits, again, no changes in the overall plan scope of the work or the timing of when the audit was originally agreed upon. All reports were filed with the state by the December 31st reporting deadline. Again, I was happy to report that. I think when I signed off on December 31st, just over half of the municipalities had actually filed their reports with the state. So again, certainly appreciate management working with us through the audit process this year. Again, we did perform the audit primarily remotely, but I am happy, again, that we were able to meet the filing deadline with the state. In terms of significant audit findings, again, we do review your accounting policies and practices. We do always communicate any new accounting standards that are implemented by the town. The GAZBID did issue a statement number 95, which postponed the effective date of most GAZBID standards by at least one year of respondemic. So again, that was the GAZBID's way to provide some relief to governmental entities. And as such, the town did not implement any new accounting standards for fiscal year 2020. We do review your significant estimates and judgments involved in determining amounts that are included in the financial statements. Those are your estimated useful lives that are assigned to your capital assets, as well as your discount rates that are utilized to determine your net pension and OPEB liabilities. Again, we did deem those estimates to be reasonable and consistent with what is utilized by other municipalities within the state. Happy to report that there were no significant difficulties encountered in performing the audit. Again, happy to report there were no audit adjustments again this year. Also, we had no uncorrected misstatements. So to the extent we identified an audit adjustment, if we proposed that adjustment to be reflected in your financial statements and management did not want to report it, again, we're required to communicate that to you. Happy to report that there were no disagreements during the course of performing the audit. We did obtain a management representation letter. Again, nothing unusual in that representation letter that we requested from management, and we were not aware of any consultations by management with any other independent accounts. And so with that, that concludes the overall presentation with respect to the town's audit. And again, happy to answer any questions that anybody might
Are there any questions from the selectmen? For Mike?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Rick.
On page seven of the Town of Portland Financial Statement, why was the interest expense so much higher in 2020? It was $983,233.
I'd have to go back and specifically look at the work papers, but I know at the end of 2019, the town did bond for approximately $10 million. And so that drove the overall increase in interest expense.
Yeah, and then right above that, the teacher retirement was almost four and a half million. Was that a state? Was that mandated by the state? That was a big increase.
So as the town recognizes a pension expense for your pension plans, you are also required to recognize, I'll call it, an on-behalf pension expense for participating in the state teachers' retirement system. So that is ultimately the impact of the state's actuarial valuations on the town's teachers.
Okay, thank you.
We don't pay that. It's paid on our behalf by the state.
Okay, all right.
You remember Governor Malloy had asked cities and towns to pay that. So there's an identification of that benefit, but we, the towns are not required for paying that, but you can imagine if we were.
Yeah, I recall something about that when Malloy was governor.
A piece that factored into that increase from 2020 to 2019 is that the state actually did decrease the discount rate on their investments from about 8% to 6.9%. So that ultimately resulted in an overall increase in pension expense that's being recognized by the state.
Questions? I want to thank you, Mike, and I want to thank Tom Robinson for all the hard work that he does. Once again, we have a very clean audit without any findings, and that is not an easy task. And I appreciate your work, Mr. Robinson, and certainly the work of Mahoney Sable. You're a great partner to us, and you provide good oversight for the work that's performed by our finance department. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
If there's no further questions, we'll move on to public comment, and I'll ask Nick Dawson if there's any public comment in the chat.
There is no public comment in the chat. I don't think there's anyone with their hands raised either.
All right. Thank you, Nick. The next item, we've moved new business up to number seven. So I will ask for a motion for appointment of auditor of public accounts. And perhaps before we speak, I don't know, Tom, if you wanted to say anything?
Yes, I, yeah, one, I wanted to say thank you to Mahoney Sable for working with us. And I'm trying to get my computer issues here remedied, but I'd like to say that. And what we have here for this year, the audit fee would be the same audit fee as it was in fiscal year 2020. And we have that, we talked about this last year. We were a plan there. So I think that we're getting a quality service, reasonable fee. Thank you.
I will read the resolute, the resolution, which is resolved pursuant to Section 407 of the Portland Town Charter. The Board of Selectmen hereby appoints the firm of Mahoney Sable of 180 Glastonbury Boulevard, Suite 400, Glastonbury, Connecticut, 06033, to audit the books and records of the town for the fiscal period July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Is there a motion to approve? The resolution is read.
I'll make the motion, Ralph.
Thank you, Ralph. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'm sorry.
Lou spoke up. I raised my hand. Lou spoke up.
Okay.
We'll give it to Lou.
All right. Thank you, Lou. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor of the resolution as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or any abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries. Congratulations, and thank you once again, Mike, as well as your assistant. I'm sorry, I can't see your name on the slide, but thank you very much, Heather. I don't remember your last name.
It's all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So now we'll move on to also under new business, which is the refunds of excess payments for Hyundai Lease Titling Trust, $43.51. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm sorry, I didn't see the person who said that. I apologize.
It was, it was Susan. It was me.
Okay, thank you, Lou. And I think it was seconded by Rick.
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. So now we'll move into old business, and under racial equity, diversity, and inclusion, before I go to April tonight, I did want to make mention to the selectmen that at the forum that the task force had, where they discussed some information from the survey that was done, and questions and answers, and really a thorough review of the survey, one of the questions that had come to me as for selectwoman was whether or not we would have training for the selectmen. And one thing that I would like to suggest is that we do have training in racial equity, diversity, and inclusion. And I would be happy to speak with our librarian, Janet Nocheck. And Janet has been working with other groups on these issues. She has spearheaded, along with her staff, some trainings for the public as well as other groups. And I asked her this afternoon if she'd be willing to help me to find a good trainer, someone to come in and give a presentation to us. And I thought it would be very appropriate to have it in a public setting so that while we can receive some continuing education on this topic of racial equity, diversity, and inclusion, it could also be given to the general public, because all of our meetings are public. And I was going to suggest that the second meeting in June might be a good time. And if that is an agreement, I'll get back to you on some additional details on that as we vet some of the possibilities.
Susan, that sounds very good. I think we should do that.
Okay. That'll be near the Juneteenth celebration that the town will be having, but it's the Wednesday before that date, and
It's June 17th.
Yes, thank you. So it'll be the June 17th meeting, and we'll put it on a calendar. And as I said, I'll get back to you on the selection of a speaker and/or a training that we can all have and share with the public as well. And with that, if April Graves is on, I would ask her to give us her report.
Susan, I got a text message from April saying that about a half hour ago that she will be running late and probably will not be making a meeting tonight.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks, Mike, for the information. Then we will move on to the reentry committee, discussion of services programs offered during COVID-19. I did indicate Town Hall on here. We're also going to be speaking with our librarian, Janet Nocheck. But I wanted to point out that I will be monitoring very carefully the governor's recommendations for municipal offices and offices in general. And there may be, I'll bring back to you likely in April, some recommendations for some changes here at Town Hall. And I will say, things seem to be going very well, and I have not received any complaints. Everyone, knock on wood, has been healthy. I'm happy to report. Many of our employees have been fully vaccinated, and they continue to make their appointments as their age allows. And I know that, I believe, by April 4 or April 6, all individuals over the age of 16, according to the governor, will be able to at least register for a VAC. So that's a good thing, and we look forward to our ability to open up and have a little more ability to have people come into the building. But we are going to be going with caution, and any changes I will bring to the selectmen before we make those changes and have them publicized for the group. So with that, I'll open it up for Janet. I know she wanted to say a few things about the Portland Library. Good evening, Janet.
Good evening. So visible here. Hi, yeah, it's going well, as we've talked about. We have appointments for people to come in, and sometimes they walk up because they don't know the deal yet. If it's not too crowded, we let them in. So that's been working out. It really has not been too crowded or you haven't had large groups at any one time. So that's what we hoped for. So slow but sure, people are finding their way back and are very happy, those that are happy to come in and browse. We had a couple of people just thrilled coming in today and pull the seat, turn in there again, here and there. So we're hoping that we'll keep, I think it will keep working well. We've got one staff member on duty most of the time to kind of greet and make sure that things are going well. And it's really, we haven't had any, you know, everybody's been so cooperative that it's been quite pleasant. So we are open most of Monday through Thursday. We have hours through 6:00 in the evening. So people have a chance after work to make an appointment or come by. And we're continuing with the curb-side services where people can reserve things ahead of time, call us up or go online. And we will bring materials up to them in their cars, as you know. So, you know, I think that bound at times we're running back and forth, but other than that, it's good. It's worth the little bit of moments where we just step aside as usual. So it works out well. I don't know if there were any concerns that anyone that you wanted to ask me about. We'll continue. We'll see how it goes as more people learn what's going on, and they may have.
I had received some communication, Janet, that people are happy that they're able to come into the library. So So I think we're going in the right direction and that's a good thing. Rick?
Yeah. So Janet, what, what are the current hours or when do you have staff at the library?
Yeah, we're, we're there 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Well, till, there are people there at 8:00 PM a couple nights a week. And you can make an appointment till five or six. And then there's curbside pickup, those other couple nights a little later, six to seven. That's Tuesday and Wednesday. I actually sent this out in writing using that hopefully you'll all get. We'll send that around. It's on the website and most things. We are, we close for an hour midday. We close at one o'clock though, just to have a, you know, break and have the, the deep cleaning that needs to be done. You know, we do a little bit of cleaning. For instance, if someone needs a computer, get, you know, that with the sanitizer. So and to take care of the returns that, the returns are now being done through only the book drops.
Are
Oh, it takes a little time.
Are you there at all on Fridays or Saturdays?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Yeah, Fridays we're there 10 to 5. Yes, yes. And Saturday we're there 10 to 1, we're there till 2. We stopped taking appointments about 1:15. You know, have curbside till about 1:30.
Um, so when, when people want to come in, do you, do they call ahead or do they kind of just come knock on the door and if you're not very busy, you let them in?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we're trying to encourage the call ahead just so we don't get crowds. So we can spot how many are coming in, but it usually works fine. People kind of walk up or call from the door.
Yeah. Okay.
We do have a doorbell if anyone's walking, doesn't have a phone, you know, and we're around. We're looking out for them. So it's been going well.
All right. Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Any other questions on the library? Thank you, Janet. Keep up the good work and hopefully soon we'll be back to the way we were in 2019, early 2019. The next item is the Board of Selectmen review of the Town Charter. As you know, within our charter, we're asked at least once every five years to review the charter. And this board had not done that, so I wanted to be certain you had the opportunity to look. I know Lou had made a couple of notes he sent ahead to me. I had also forwarded to the selectmen a charter revision toolkit that is produced by the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. And there is a very helpful basic steps for revising or developing a municipal charter that's included in that toolkit, as well as some examples of different sized towns within the state of Connecticut as far as their charters are concerned. I believe there's one from Clinton. I believe there's one from Simsbury. And a few other towns as well, including Bethel, New Canaan. And I believe that is, that is the conclusion of the, the different charters that are there. Those are for your reference materials and I downloaded a copy if anybody wanted to borrow it. We have it here at Town Hall. In fact, I have two copies in case you wanted to borrow one for your reference sometime. But I'll open it up to the selectmen to see what they found in their review. Maybe we'll start with you, Lou.
Hey, thank you, Susan. In reviewing the, the charter and some of these things may be redundant or maybe non, non starting issues, but looking at it, maybe we can look at these. And if in fact, these things need to be adjusted, we could then, according to the charter, set up a, a review and revision committee. And then I think it has to go to the town, a town meeting and a few other things that have to go on before that. But there were four different sections that I found that maybe there could be some adjustments and maybe these adjustments aren't necessary. But from a layperson's point of view, maybe these could be adjusted. So when you look at section 804, which is the appointments of boards or two boards, we currently list boards, authorities and commissions. Should we include committees such as the Clean Energy Task Force, the Airline Trail Steering Committee and the Equity and Diversity Inclusion Committee? So these are committees we've had, some are new. There may be others that I, I didn't even list. But maybe since we are, it says appointments of boards, but then it says we list, we've listed boards, authorities and commissions. So I just wondered if maybe committees should be listed as well. And that, that's just a, an idea. Oh, eight, long range capital improvement commission. We currently include water and sewer. Should we include other areas where we do list capital improvements such as fire police and public works? And maybe there's some others as well. Board of Ed, just a, a point of information there. Section 1006, Department of Human Services. We've made some changes in this department regarding COVID and I'm just wondering if maybe those changes should be continued or whether they are just going to happen hopefully once every hundred years. We'll see where that goes. And then section 1105, Coordinator of Civil Preparedness. I can remember civil preparedness in the 60s, 70s, 80s. I mean, that's the phrase and the terms that we've used, but since then, we now have a CERT program. And I think that's an emergency resource team. Is that separate from the civil preparedness or maybe should it be listed under civil preparedness as another agency that helps us to do the things we need to do for the community? So those were the, the items that I looked at that thought maybe they could be adjusted. And of course, if they're reasonable ideas, then maybe we can move forward with a, a commission to revise our charter. And I think we should, I think we should revise it because it does recommend that we revise it, even if it's the same and don't change it, but we're supposed to revise it, I think, every five years. So we're due to revise it even if we put a rubber stamp on it saying what's there is fine. If we want to change it, well, then we can do that too. Thank you.
I think you're pointing out some things that are probably vestiges. There are things that may have been in the correct way in the 1980s or the 1990s, but now they go by new terms. So I like your suggestion for the simple updating of some of the terminology as well as some of our committees that we may want to codify and put into the charter so that they can always exist. So I think those are some very solid suggestions. Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got a couple that we're looking at and I, I commend Lou. I didn't write down all the different sections I was looking at, but, but we do make, for example, section 1004 refers to the Health Department, right? Again, a vestige of when we had our own health department and our own health directive. Well, now we're part of the Chatham Health District. So we would, might want to update it and reflect how we're actually operating that way. I look at, you know, some of the terms of office and how we, how we elect folks. And I think probably a good time to take a look at that. And we have a good model in the Board of Ed where you've got, you know, kind of overlapping terms that allow sort of a maintenance of institutional memory. I don't know if that's something that would want to be looked at for other offices as well. Also, I don't, I look at it and I think, see things like, I think it's for the zoning board. It's a five-year term, which means we, we actually had a case where we elected somebody in the 2019 election who did not take office until 2020, a full year later. It probably makes sense maybe that we align our terms more for when people would actually take office. You know, just kind of clean some of that stuff up. Something we talked a little bit about was, you know, at least a review of the financial thresholds and how we operate, what's required. How, how long has it been since any of that was adjusted and indexed? In terms of before, you know, etc., at least just a review. Maybe that, I think the current threshold's a half a million. You know, maybe that might be fine or maybe we want to look at that. But at least a consideration of some of those changes. You muted, Susan.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Yeah, Susan. Yes, I'd just like to say, you know, I've started the review process of the charter and I think it's, I think it's really, really important that, you know, we pay it some deep detail and attention. But I'm asking the permission of the other selectmen just due to the fact that we're in the middle of budget right now and my focus and concentrations on that. And I feel like we can kind of table this maybe next month or after we clear the budget. Because I do think we need to like put some time into this and make sure we do this right. So like the other selectmen, I have glanced at it. I've started looking, but I'm just not fully prepared to
Sure.
anything tonight. So just, I'd just like to table it at a later time if that's possible. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts?
I'll, I'll comment. I, that's fine with me. You know, I understand Mike saying, I, you know, I certainly know we're in the middle of the budget. And I mean, as long as we perform the task of going through it, you know, if it's a month from now, that's fine for me. I kind of found that things that were mentioned by Lou and Jim are things that I also had found. You know, so anything that had ranges, numerical ranges, whether we should, you know, it's a different time. Should we have that same number or not? So I understand that. I did, I had, I do actually have a question and I just don't know. There's a section there and it talks about environmental health. So who provides that? I really, how is that provided within our town?
Are you referring to the charter as well as there was, there's, there's a page in the, in the in the budget as well, but
Yeah, I just want to understand how that's, it's 1009. I just, I, I know we're fulfilling that. I'm just trying to understand how it's fulfilled. It's not something I
Most of that is now with the Chatham Health District, for example, food service inspections, subsurface sewage disposal inspections, plan review, perk tests for subdivisions, building lots, zoning, housing code enforcement. Those are all performed by Chatham.
That's what I figured, but I just wanted to verify.
Okay, yeah. In the past, I think there was a separate delineation in that there was a sanitarian that the town had and then they had a doctor that served as the Health Department. Now that's one in the same. So we have a, a physician who is a consultant to Chatham Health District and we're led by a Masters in Public Health official in terms of the administration of many of the environmental matters as well as other health-related public needs. Is that, is that better?
Yep. Then that's fine. I, I figured that. I just wanted to verify when I was looking.
Good. And I agree with Mike. I think this is a start. I wanted to put it on the agenda. It's been on the follow-up items for quite a long time and I thought it was time to put it to at least a discussion. And I'll be happy to put that on perhaps in the second meeting of April, if that's advisable. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all for your work. Yes, Rick.
Um, I, I, I like that idea of that we, I, I think this needs to be reviewed. I kind of agree with Mike. Maybe, maybe we should sort of sink our teeth into it after budget season. But I also have a question or another comment, sort of reminds me of a company manual that you have to, every so many years, you just have to update, not necessarily throw it out and start over. But, you know, it needs to be just revised and brought up to date. My question is, do, is that, is this something that's like just updating it? Is it something the selectmen do or do we
No.
appoint a committee?
Yes.
Okay.
There's requirements that there can be, I believe, a particular, no more than numbers of elected officials on a commission. There is a prescription that is delineated by state statute. And there is a chart, I'll just hold it up, that is in that toolkit that I can share at a later date so that you can see that. And it talks about the basic steps for either revising or developing a municipal charter. And it's typically done by people other than the Board of Selectmen. You may have one or two members on there, but more typically it's an at-large committee that's assigned. It's a lot of work. I've been through many charter revision commissions. It is not to be taken lightly. There is a lot of work because there's research. You have to look at state laws. You have to look at what you have and what you may choose to proceed to. So you want to look at other towns and what perhaps they're doing in, in light of commissions or committees or terms of office, things of that nature. So you have to love it to want to do it, but it's not something the board left me to go and take on. You're, you can decide if you want to have a charter revision commission, you can decide you don't want to have one. What our charter says is you as a body have to look at it and make that determination at least every five years. Now, if you decide to proceed, then you have to assign a charter revision commission and proceed in that fashion. But it's a lot of work.
Even, even just
The number, it's five to 15 electors and no more than a third of them can hold public office.
Go ahead, Rick.
So even minor changes like that, you know, say Lou touched on or everybody touched on here. Those level of changes still have to go through a
So, mhm, yes.
All right.
It's an important job.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think the points you made about updating, Rick, and, and making it more, more pertinent to 2021 is important to do. It's been a while since we've made any of those either editorial changes or name changes and, and things of that nature. It can be as simple as going through and making those kinds of changes and it can be more complicated as well. But the selectmen have a large role to play in terms of the acceptance of the final recommendations of a charter revision commission and whether or not those proceed. So there is a role that you play, but you are not always, and most typically you're not the commissioners on, on the committee. But you do have a large role to play in terms of the review of what then goes to referendum for everyone in the town to vote on. Not unlike when the state makes a change in the state constitution, they have to go to the entire state of Connecticut in order for a vote. This is, you know, the town of Portland, you would have to go to a, to a full referendum vote. And if it's, there, there's a lot of requirements that we'll go into once we get there.
Okay.
And I think the last time looking at the, the index in it that it was actually amended was 2004.
Yes. There was another vote on another group of amendments, but it failed at the ballot because there weren't sufficient numbers of people who voted. If you have it at a time that is not in November at a regularly scheduled election, you have to have a certain percentage of people showing up. I believe it's 20%. And they have to vote in the affirmative. If you get 19.1% voting and they all vote yes, it doesn't pass if it's a special referendum. So it's, it's important that people be part of the process. It's important that it be probably on a November ballot. And if it was something you were interested in, you'd try to time it that way so that it's on a, a ballot in November. And I would not, given the amount of work, and I know the amount of work, I would not anticipate and would not recommend that this go in November of this year. I would, if, if it's going to be possible, would be the following November. But we'd have to look at all that timing. We have a lot that we're doing, as Mike said, right now. I don't intend that we spend too much more time today, but in the future we can take a look at it. There's no hurry. All right. The next item, we have Nate Foley here and I believe we also have the, who's the chairman of our Park and Rec Commission. They wanted to come tonight and talk with us about a proposed fee schedule. And I think I'll start with They wanted to come tonight and talk with us about a proposed fee schedule. And I think I'll start with, with you Nate.
Hi, how's everybody doing tonight? Thank you.
Hi Nate.
Are we going to have exercises and moving around tonight?
We can do whatever we want.
We got Mike, we got Karen.
No, thank you for having me though. I, I did want to discuss a, a possible fee schedule change for property rentals that we oversee in Portland, specifically Riverfront Park with the Portland recreational complex coming on board. We're definitely going to need to be looking at potentials for the concessions area as well as fields down the road. And just all of our field usage in general throughout Rose Hill, Nolan Field, et cetera. Especially as, you know, Little League is growing, Portland Soccer Club is growing. We're seeing a lot more teams, both youth and adult utilizing our fields. And we're also seeing a lot more nonprofit private organizations and non-resident groups renting and trying to utilize Riverfront Park Pavilion and the Band Shell. So I believe the board have all received at this point a, a new versus old price comparison of our pavilion rental fee structure. And I tried to break it down in a way that made sense. It was rather difficult to put together on my end because going from what we currently have is a very confusing structure. And we're trying to ultimately take that structure that's confusing for both Andy and myself as office administration and the potential renters who are inquiring about utilizing the pavilion and the band shell. We broke it down in a way that priority groups based on Portland municipality groups, specifically Portland community-based nonprofits, Portland residents and private organizations, and lastly, non-residents and non-resident private organizations in that order. We tried to really focus and make sure that we're meeting the needs and providing the amenity and accommodation to Portland residents first before we bring in non-taxpayers or non-taxpaying organizations to utilize our facilities. As the Parks and Rec Commission and I revisited the proposed fees that we discussed with the Board of Selectmen last year, we considered all the comments and we worked very diligently to create a permit that was specifically for Riverfront Park. And we tried to make it more consistent with the rental verbiage in terms of conditions and requirements for use, as well as streamlining it to just create a more efficient rental process for all of those four user groups, as well as when Andy and I are discussing rentals with the potential renters. So with that said, we constantly are considering fee adjustments from time to time for property rentals at Riverfront Park. And as I mentioned, the new recreational complex, especially the fields, and potentially bringing in more revenue for our department in terms of how we pay and really maintain the fields in these spaces when it comes to staffing, supplies and overall maintenance that comes into play. And these property rentals are a very important component of our revenue stream as working through the budget for the upcoming fiscal year affected an increase of revenue for our, for the proposed budget pending the possibility of fee changes for property rentals specifically at Riverfront, as well as increasing the field rental fees as we were able to provide a more specific price point for those fields and the different user groups. So while we're trying to ultimately create more consistency amongst all of our permits, our primary goal to start is to create a more consistent and a more, more under, a more efficient permit for the pavilion first off. And we believe once we have that permit pavilion and the band shell pavilion more, more exact for both ourselves administratively as well as our users, we'll be able to take that and very easily translate it to those field use, field use permits, as well as potential field sponsorships for banners, as well as other ways to bring property revenue back into our department. I know going back and speaking with Susan, it seems that the way we have to move forward with something like this is by almost having a town ordinance implemented for Parks and Recreation to then proceed with a public hearing for those fee increases or fee changes that need to be considered on a recurring basis as the staffing, supplies and maintenance costs increase over time. So I was hoping to really start here and move in whatever direction we need to, to have that ordinance get implemented within our, within our policies so that we can move towards a public hearing to have that ability to make some.
Thanks Nate. I wanted to point out that when the selectmen look at fee changes, you go in accordance with ordinances. So for example, and I think the selectmen will remember, not too long ago, we looked at the fees associated with the transfer station. And in the book of ordinances, there is an ordinance that says that from time to time, the fees will be changed for the services and things that occur at the transfer station. Similarly, we have an ordinance that says for hawkers, peddlers and vendors, there will be the ability from time to time to change those fees. And we bring those to you as well. Another example is building fees. And those come to you, but they come to you because you have said, and an ordinance agrees, that those will be reviewed from time to time and changed. I think the purpose of this is to let the public know that we're thinking about charging fees for public entities. So it's the stage, it's the pavilion. I mean, these are things that we've done and we've more or less been able to get back some of our expenses. But I think if you're going to be getting into a routine of having permission to use some of these facilities for your own use, I'm not talking about a pickup game at the, at the Riverfront Park where you have a volleyball game. I'm not talking about going and bringing your family down for a picnic. That's, no. We're talking about when you have a wedding or you're going to have a party and you don't want other people to be there and there's a fee associated with that. And I think as we look at our new park, there'll be opportunities, maybe when people from out of town want to use that facility or a special event to happen that is not necessarily just a people from Portland using their own parks and recreation. Years ago, when I was on the Board of Selectmen, we talked about this. And at that time, the selectmen decided, in fact, they did not want to charge fees for use of fields. And Sandy Darna was here at the time and she and her commission had looked at whether or not there would be a fee schedule. And we held off on that. So now if the selectmen are inclined, because I think we've had some pilot projects here, some pilot tries of, of charging people for the use of the facilities when it's personal use and we have to reimburse the staff that get that project, that facility ready, they clean it and all of that. But I'm pointing out that when you do these things, you really want to let people know. And when you have an ordinance, I'm proposing that it be really just one sentence. And the one sentence would say something like, from time to time, the Parks and Recreation Department will assign permit fees for usage. And then when you want to have a fee, you put it out to a public hearing, just like what Nate has put forward. And that proposed fees would go to a public hearing. But the decision, the determination is made by this board as to whether those fees will be enacted. But it's that public process that I think is so important and the transparency that not only has the Park and Rec Commission under Karen, for example, as our chairwoman, and our Park and Rec Director with Nate, said that they want to have this done, but it's then said yes by the Board of Selectmen. And then when, when there's questions or there's a situation where someone doesn't agree, it go back to the elected body and it's been a decision that's been made correctly. So I just wanted to point that out to you. It's not something we've talked about in great detail. I'm not talking about a complicated ordinance, but it is something I attempted late this afternoon to talk to Carrie Olson about our town attorney and she was unavailable. So I will make sure that I am correct. But going forward, at a minimum, you would have a public hearing. If you don't need an ordinance, that's fine. But if you do, I want to make sure that we're trying to do this as orderly as possible and make sure that it's as transparent as possible.
That makes complete sense to me and I, I would be happy to pass that along to the commission who I've worked, you know, very thoroughly with to come up with some of these different permit breakdowns as well as pricing structures. By all means, I want to do this as correctly as possible and I want to make sure that everybody is aware as these changes do go through for the public, if they do. And, you know, as I said, it's, property rentals are, are a large and very important revenue stream for the Parks and Rec Department. So by being able to figure out a way to really move forward with this, you know, it is something that's definitely going to help us for this coming fiscal budget year as well as many more to come.
And I, I think, confident that I can get an answer and give it to the selectmen during our, our workshops that are coming up next week.
Great, thank you.
Karen, did you have any comments that you wanted to make or anything additional?
No, Nate pretty much said it all. So we're just kind of hoping that we can go in the right direction and kind of move forward with this. So thank you.
Thank you very much for coming to the meeting tonight, both of you, Nate and Karen. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks a lot.
So could I just make a comment for a second, Susan?
Absolutely.
You know, obviously, I've been along this path for many years with Park and Rec. And I think, you know, the time going back to when Sandy came before the board and today, it's changed a lot. Obviously, when we look at the pavilion, we are talking about providing services for a facility that does incur costs. So it's a revenue stream, but it's intended to obviously cover costs that we will incur when those services are used. And that's, you know, what we see with the pavilion and the, and the Riverfront Park. And it's on the field side, which we're not really looking at numbers today, but we have to look at the fact is way back when Sandy and, and the board talked at that time, fields were basically used by Little League or used by, you know, the soccer club. But now what you have is you have independent sporting clubs that are looking to utilize properties because they don't necessarily may not have their own home field to, to use those services. So they come looking for fields. So the things when we've talked about in Park and Rec about fields, it did kind of relate to the fact of covering ourselves to make sure that we really had, you know, we cover ourselves if someone wants to use those fields to, if it makes sense to allow them to use it and to make sure we cover ourselves as something where to go wrong with that relationship. So.
I agree.
Something that's, it's good. It's more discussion certainly, but that's the intent that, you know, that we've had all along the way.
Thank you for mentioning that Ralph, because that ties directly into the, you know, the prioritizing of Portland municipal groups and making sure that, you know, we're getting them as much field usage as possible and accommodating their needs prior to those outside organizations who really have no stake in Portland directly. We want to make sure that Portland Little League, Portland Soccer Club and any Portland group for that matter is getting that priority field usage, as well as Portland residents being prioritized using the other properties such as Riverfront Park. So, you know, that, that's definitely our goal here. Anything we can do to streamline the process and make it more effective for both our side administratively as well as the, the user side, it's, I think it's just going to help everyone in general.
Anybody else? Okay, so we'll continue that during budget season. I thank you for introducing this to us tonight once again. I think it's much clearer than previously and I think it, it should be very helpful moving forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan, and thank you to the board. Appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Letter E, appointments, reappointments to boards and commissions. Are there any this evening?
No.
No? Okay.
Done.
Status and committee reports?
Susan, I have a, I have a report for the Building Steering Committee.
Oh, thank you.
For the Portland Public Schools.
Yep.
Um, so we are, we've actually had three meetings now. We are a young committee. We are just getting started. We've had introductions to everybody on the committee. We have a well diverse and a bunch group of people. It's, it's very nice working with these guys, some really knowledgeable people in there that'll help with our committee. So just like to say that, that, that's been a very positive thing. And other than that, we were able to take tours of the buildings if so wanted to. And we've actually had outside contractors come speak to us about the process of A, either closing down a school, refurbishing schools, maybe even possibly building a new school. This particular company, I forgot the name of it right now, but they basically guide you through the process of it. And it's, it was really interesting to hear them talk about it. There's a lot that goes into this. It's a something that's, it's going to take a lot of work on our committee. And just like to say, Dr. Britton, along the way, has been a very good, he's very good at his job. He's very thorough and make sure that we understand what's going on. And he's projecting it as a long, you know, a long-term process of what we're going to decide to do. But like I said, we are, we're new, we're young and we're just getting started. So I look forward to keep reporting back to you guys. Lou and I are on the committee. So I believe Lou, probably next month, will give you his report on it. So, so thank you guys.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Lou.
You're welcome.
Good report.
I have a couple of items, I guess. Board of Ed meeting last night, good meeting. But there's a few interesting points that were interesting. One, Dr. Britton, he, he went through, as he typically does, the COVID numbers and talking about how the schools are doing. And right now they're doing well. But one of the, because some of the commentary that he had was that, he said for Portland, he says, we're down to 8.4 per 100,000 in terms of positivity, which puts us back down in the yellow zone. And effectively gets us, so that Portland's looking more like we looked last summer. So that was some very good news. Chatham District itself, he said, was down to 13.8 per 100,000. So we were actually, we went from about a month and a half ago being one of the highest positivity rates in the Chatham Health District to the lowest. And overall, Connecticut was 20.9 per 100,000. He talked about vaccinations, which again, another good news story and I think probably helps the, explain, you know, talk a little bit about that positivity rate is the fact that 28% of Portland residents have had a chance to get vaccinated versus 25% in the Chatham Health District and 22% overall for Connecticut. So again, we've got the highest vaccination rate so far. That's, I think, a credit to the work that's being done by Chatham Health, the library, the calls, the setting up the appointments and all that work that's happening to facilitate that. Faculty and staff have been going through vaccinations as reported last time that they were going to be set up. They did, I guess, a group of them went on 3-5 and got the Johnson and Johnson. And my understanding is that 3-6 was a rough day, that it was definitely the single shot vaccine, you know, basically caused some reactions. And the rest of the folks that, that have wanted to take the vaccine went and have gotten their first shot through Moderna. So by 4/23, they're expecting everybody to be fully vaccinated. In other words, the last shots would be two weeks prior to that. And then that two-week grace period, that two-week period where it takes full effect. So they were kind of optimistic that by the end of April, the staff would be in good shape. You already noted the, the schedule. So that's the, all of that, I think, was positive news. Probably the, the most negative note of the meeting that's, that's, I think, important to talk about is they did announce, they previously had identified that the track, because of the deterioration that's occurred. is they did announce, they previously had identified that the track because of the deterioration that's occurred was not going to be used for competition. They were allowing it to be used for training, et cetera, and for school school use, gym use. The, they, they took a look at it after the winter and the freeze and all that. And they decided it had deteriorated further. At this point, the board has decided that it's going to be closed for any, any student activity use. So no, you can't be used for gym, can't be used for for training or for track meets. They're going to work out and try to see what that means for the coming season for track and what, what it would, you know, how they maybe be able to participate using another track and how that would be handled from a cost perspective. It is still open at this point for the public to walk, for walking, but not for other uses. That's it for Board of Ed. I did want to, Ruth Mayo from the Food Bank asked me to put out the word that 3/20, this coming Monday, 3/22 at 1:00 PM, there's going to be another food distribution at the Portland Food Bank through the home, the, the Farms to Families program. We're all set from, from a volunteer perspective. It's going to operate the same as the other ones have. It's basically folks enter, enter from Freestone, exit onto Waverly, they stay right in the vehicle. We have volunteers that will load, load food into the cars for them. And also she asked me to note that in this, with this particular, the Farms to Family, folks do not need to be registered with the Food Bank, but anyone who has a need can come and attend. And I think the only other item that I had a note here and, and that in terms from water and sewer, as I guess I would ask a status, I know that you had, I think it was a week or two ago, you had a conversation with Department of Public Health regarding the grant. I didn't know if maybe you could give us an update on that.
Sure. I'll give a quick update on that. We had a very good meeting with Lori Matthew and two members of her team from the Department of Public Health. And then this was to just the use of the $250,000 grant that we received to make improvements likely to our water system, including the potential of finding new water sources, exploring other methodologies for operating our water system. And Bob Shea is part of that. Dave Kuzminsky sat in on the meeting as well. And we have permission to move ahead and Bob is moving ahead, working with our town engineer. And the town engineer, Mr. Jacobson, will be writing the RFQ, the Request for Qualifications. And once that's written, it will be issued. And then as a team, we will proceed to determine a consultant that will guide us and help us, someone who is very qualified and experienced in water system and water delivery. So we'll be working diligently on that and moving ahead. And I want to thank Bob for making sure that we're moving ahead on that. We'll, we'll probably talk a little bit about that in a couple of minutes because the water and sewer budgets are considered the other funds, Tom, and no, not other funds? We're not doing that tonight? We're doing that under Public Works? Okay. Well, later. Stay tuned. It'll be another evening. It'll make you want to come back. But we are making progress. So thanks for the question.
Thank you.
Could I have all, I just wanted to give one, add, add for committees and commissions I've been at. I just wanted to take a second to tell everyone that, you know, I've, I've been trying to attend the EDC meetings as much I can. And the last meeting especially, Mary did a great job of really giving a good summary summarization of what a lot of the businesses in town and vacancies that have occurred and how quickly we're being able to fill those vacancies. So I know that she had put out an email, I thought a while ago, it's not bad to refer to it or refer into the EDC minutes because she gave a pretty good summarization of the same thing. But I know we always seem to certainly focus on Brainerd and hopefully Brainerd's moving and starting to have some movement. But with other businesses throughout the town are, we are doing very well with being able to make sure that we don't have vacancies in our buildings. And there's some, some very good businesses that are coming in. And another shout out for Economic Development Commission and Mary's work to doing a program where they were, a marketing program where they're giving out gift cards, drawing gift card winners for, if you had gone to some of the businesses and you had, you know, bought food at these businesses. So that seemed to go very well. And she gave some information with regards to how successful that was. So you know, we obviously always focus in on Brainerd and as I said, there was some positive news on Brainerd, but the rest of the businesses are very healthy. Even, even the ones that have struggled, they're coming back or, you know, let's face it, there are businesses that didn't necessarily make it through. But for the most part, we seem to be in really good shape within the town.
Thank you, Ralph. Lou, did you have something you wanted to add or Rick?
Sure. I was gonna say, say something about the airline trail. Just recently, we received actually a letter from you as well as Christie Carpieno about the Connecticut Greenway designation. And the Connecticut Greenway designation is, you know, it's a designation, but it's more than that in a sense that it does help you apply for grants and receive grants for trail work or for open space type activities. So we're in pretty good shape. And the way I see it is that this Connecticut Greenway designation focuses on the areas of open space. And fortunately, the land that we have with a trail that goes from Middle Hattam Road to the trail is an open space piece of property that was purchased by the town. So it meets all the qualifications for the, the designation and Riz and I are going to work on that to see if we can get that sent on to Lori Gianotti. And hopefully in the fall, we should receive our designation. And then it'll help us as we're looking for funding for the expansion of the trail.
That's great. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey Lou, I thought Lori retired.
She retired and then was rehired to work at least till April. So the deadline of this application is April 30.
Better get it in there.
Rick or Mike, any updates? Or you're all set for tonight?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you. And let's see, public comment. Nick, is there any public comment?
No, we don't have any public comment.
Thank you. Informal discussion?
Susan, I have a question for you. I know we talked about a few weeks ago. Is there any update on the status of looking and trying to get this, the speed signs on Main Street?
Again, I think it's something we can talk about during budget season. And it's going to depend on how much money we have. I think that's always a possibility. And it's something we can definitely look into. Bobby, have anything to add to that?
You're muted.
I'm in trouble. I'm muted.
Thank you, Nick. Nope. We'll continue to look at that. There's some opportunities that through the state that we've been looking at to be part of a, a grant program that some speed signs are, are possibly going to be offered in some of the areas that we put. Susan had agreed to put a request in with our group, our streets group. And I think, you know, some of those have good potential to help. We, we see good results with the speed signs that currently have been placed on Ames Hollow and High Street. We continue to see those numbers looking good. So, you know, they're working and there's, there's an awful lot of research throughout the state as well as the country that, you know, that those devices do work. And some of the devices that aren't as sophisticated as those, we might want to look into using in other areas where, you know, they'll, they'll show you your speed because you may not be paying attention to that. They'll alert you to that and hopefully we'll have the same conclusion to slow you down. They just don't have that data recording capability and camera capability to do what's, what, what our signs have now, but they, they certainly are less expensive and they can certainly serve a purpose. So we'll continue to look at that. We continue to investigate, you know, those areas. And I know the police department is actively, you know, assisting on a daily basis to reduce speed in some areas that we certainly get enough complaints about. So I think we'll just continue to move forward with, you know, our objective to, you know, promote very safe roadways for not only the people that are traveling on them, but using our, their bicycles and walking as well. And while I'm not muted, I don't know Sue if brush was on the list for tonight.
Susan is muted.
Sorry about that. I'll bring it up under informal discussion. How about that? I want to point out in discussing with Bob and our limited resources as well as the tremendous amount of work that our team has done since, let's say, July 1. COVID started in March of 2020. And March, April, May, June, July, all of us, many of us were home. And many of our residents did a good thing. They trimmed their bushes, they trimmed their trees, they brought everything down to the transfer station. And Mount Brushmore started and it got bigger and bigger and bigger. And Bob came to me and said, you know, we really need to have this chipped because we don't burn anymore and we can't have it sitting there. So approvals were given and the brush was all chipped. And then we had a storm and the storm was called Isaiah Sis or something like that. And it created havoc. It created all of these downed trees, all of this brush that came down. And many of our residents, diligent as they are, continued to bring to the now empty Mount Brushmore to start filling it up again. And we all decided that it was valuable, that we do brush pickup. For, I think we spent, and Bob will correct me if I'm wrong, about six weeks of our crews going out, picking up all the brush and bringing it down again to the transfer station. I'll never forget, Christie Carpieno came with me and we went down to look at it because it was just an amazing sight. All that brush. And so we hired the wood chipper to come again and they chipped all of that. Now, fast forward, we're into the spring and we're suggesting that we not do the brush pickup because we've really done the brush pickup for 2021. We did it in the beginning, in, in the beginning of the fiscal year. We didn't do it toward the end of the fiscal year. Now, I know there's still brush out there. There's always going to be. But we did a tremendous amount. And I will tell you that your budget for brush chipping has probably been more than exhausted. So we're suggesting that we have a little change. And that is, we did brush pickup this year already, which was budgeted for once this year. And that we go next year for the even year, 2022 in the spring. Hopefully we don't have any more storms. And we'll do the pickup starting in the even years. So essentially, we'll do it two years in a row. Right, Bob? So we'll do it in 21 and then again in 22. Fiscal years, fiscal years.
Well, I think that we would just, you know, move it to April even year and then start our every other year from there. It's changed before. But yeah, Susan, you're correct. We spent just for that storm, exhausted its complete overtime budget for the year in eight weeks. And that was for brush and storm cleanup. So, you know, we, we have concerns there in the budget now because that overtime budget was exhausted within those eight weeks that we usually use overtime on highway for storms. You know, minor storms, miscellaneous things throughout the year. So we're struggling there. It's been 2020 is a blur, you know, from March from, you know, just completely changing our whole stride to COVID and trying to protect our workers. And at the same time, trying to work under our new standards to protect each other, we had that storm and still needed to work. And it was eight weeks, eight total weeks to, to clean the town up, to remove the brush from our residents, which we needed to do. The amount of volume of brush for our residents was really impossible for them to move. And it needed to be moved for the health and safety of our roads, for the property, all in all, for the community. So we did that. That was probably the largest pile that I've ever seen there. And we had to grind that again within the same budget. So not only did we exhaust our overtime, we exhausted our transfer station line item for brush that almost doubled, removal, debris removal, as well as the rental equipment that we needed to do to rent to do this safely. Because, you know, our equipment is getting older and we only have one machine that really, with a Versa bucket that properly can grab an awful lot of brush safely and load it, but we had just too much. So we had to rent that. So moving forward, even next year, if our equipment purchases and our leasing program goes forward, we're going to be able to do this much more efficiently because we're going to also be looking for equipment that's going to help us during these times. So it is a budget concern for me. And I need to get through this year the best we can. It's been a tough year. It started hard and it's been a hard winter too. So those budgets are, are hit pretty hard as well. So if we can maintain what we're doing, I'm looking just for a little bit of relief. And I wouldn't be asking for that because I know how important that service is to our residents and our taxpayers. But we did so much for those eight or nine weeks that I think that we can, we can get by another year and go to the even years moving forward.
But I'll open that up for discussion.
So Bob, can residents still bring brush on their own to the transfer?
Absolutely. And since that, you know, not only the residents, the pile is growing by the day. So they are utilizing the transfer station for brush removal every day. We have a small fee now for that. And, you know, it doesn't seem to be an issue because I think those residents are finding that it is a very small fee that, you know, for the amount of brush that they're bringing in. But for us, it adds up a little bit and it helps our budget. I was only trying to capture a certain percentage of that budget to offset the cost of grinding because it's going so much higher every year, primarily due to fuel cost for these contractors to come in and do this work. But yes, they can certainly do that. And, and that is, I think, a great service for them to be able to do.
Yeah. Well, as long as they can do that, I barring another, like say hurricane, tropical storm, ice storm or something, I don't, I think we can get by without going around town, picking up brush. That's, that's my two cents.
Anybody else?
I would agree. We, we just did it. We did it in the fall. We did it, you know, throughout last year. With several instances, I, I agree with that.
Bob, how much does it cost each time you grind?
About $10,000, Mike.
So I was told an estimated cost of buying one of those chipper's by one of your town workers is about 150 grand. Do you ever think about doing a multi-town purchase and sharing it so we don't have to sub it out? You know, get four towns involved, split the cost and rotate it?
We've, you know, we've, we've done that with a couple of other pieces of equipment, Mike, but nothing as large as one of those grinders, but we can certainly look at that in the future. You know, that, so we have a great spot that we can store brush that's certified by DEP. And it's great for us that we have to, we can, we don't have to re-permit. All we have to do is request that site in the event of a storm. Other towns, you know, don't really have a site. So we'd have to look to make sure that those towns have a site like ours and they do that much brush. Some don't take it. I know that. Some charge an awful lot to take it because they know the cost to remove it. But, you know, that's an option. That's, you know, we can certainly look at that. But yeah, anywhere between 160 to $180,000 for a, a grinder. But you, but you still have to be able to decide what you're going to do with the product. And if you saw the product after it's ground and the trucks that move it from our facility, we we can't store more than so many cubic yards of of chip on the property per our transfer station permit. So that's another issue. That's one of the reasons why we remove it. We grind it and remove it, Mike. So I don't know what the stipulations are for other towns in relation to what they can keep or what they would use. But, you know, a lot of people don't use chip unless it's processed and treated just because of the bug you can bring into your own property. So there's might not be a value there, but yeah, you are correct on the cost of a grinder. And if we were to look to see how we would move that and when we would be able to do it. But my whole other side of that would be what would we do with that product after it was ground?
Okay.
They use, they use the trailer, tandem trailers to move that from the facility, which takes two days. And you'll see them moving in and out, six trailers at a time. It's a lot of material.
And, and next year, Mike, we should have provided our budget proceeds as suggested. We'll have the excavator with the grapple, which will help for picking up that brush that we'll own. We won't have to rent that truck. And then we'll also have a new dump truck so that we'll be able to be safer in terms of the work that we're doing on the road. I mean, we have gotten, as you all know, a tremendous amount of use of our equipment. Our Public Works crews doing a lot of work to clean up the town after all of these storms, whether they're in the fall, the spring or the winter. They bring with them quite a bit of challenge and they really are rough on our equipment. Our repairs are many and done well, but there is also the matter of age and safety. So that's why the suggestions are in the budget as they are. One other small thing I want to mention, and it's something I've been working with Bob on. You know, our Resource Recovery Center is a tremendous place and it does an awful lot of good for us. And I read every once in a while on Facebook or comments that I get how much people do appreciate it. Appreciate being able to bring their old furniture or bring some of their old things at home or their brush or their garbage or whatever it might be. Not every town has those. Another thing that we have that in April, working together with Public Works and setting aside a couple of days that we're going to make available to some of our smaller certified farms, the ability to pick up some of the compost that's made by our transfer station at the Resource Recovery Station. And we're going to set up a simple system whereby there'll be some assistance for those farmers on specified days. And they can register, come down. We'll know they're coming, we'll be organized and we'll be able to provide some of that compost that some of them have been asking for. It's important that we support our farmers. It's important that we promote the resource that's at our transfer station. And I'd love to see more people come down there and just take it in their garbage cans or whatever it might be, as, as my family does. Because it's really helpful to keeping our garden, and we plan to have a big garden this year to get through this COVID business and stay healthy. It's something initiative that we're working together on. And I just wanted to mention that. I think it's, it's a good thing and it shows a lot of sustainability in our community that we recycle and reuse and make good. So you'll hear more about that as time goes on.
Can I ask you or Bob, where are you getting the material for the composting? I, I'm not familiar with that. I mean, I go to the transfer station often, but are you taking people's garbage and composting there or?
It's all the leaves, you know, from the fall and grass clippings and miscellaneous stuff that would go into the compost pile. Yep. So we turn those over. Those are all those rows of compost that get turned every month or every three months, depending on the activity. And they work their way down through the process to the very end of the row where you primarily really have your richest compost. And then we'll spread that out as part of our program down there for the land closure as it's not used. There are many residents that go there often, you know, with their five gallon buckets or their trash cans, like Susan mentioned, you know, to, to pick up. It's free.
It's a good, that's a good service.
Available for anybody that wants it. This is a little different related to the farms because, you know, they're looking for a little bit of assistance because obviously they would take more.
Yeah.
You guys have a permit, right, Bob?
Would the, the farmers need a permit, Tom, or you mean?
No, for anybody who's saying that anyway, it's free for people. Do people need a permit to get into the facility there, right?
Yeah, they, yeah, it's usually those that have a permit and use the facility, Tom. If they were to come in separately for that, we don't see that. You know, we don't usually see that. It's just those residents that are really part of our community that are part of the transfer station that take advantage of that. And, you know, I'm, I'm sure maybe others that are permitted might pick up for others that aren't, you know, that are their neighbors. But then again, it's a, it's a free material that it's nice if we can get it removed and the residents can use it because it's, you know, pretty abundant. The, the amount of leaves that come in every year from residents that bring them in on their own is quite a bit. It's quite a bit.
Good service.
The test to what Susan said, I've had businesses in multiple towns in Connecticut. And you're, the transfer station here is the best around. And you have very convenient hours. You know, you can get in there five days a week. So it's.
And, and Rick, as you mentioned that, we're also thinking and discussing about summer hours whereby we may choose an evening where we would be open until seven o'clock and allow people who are away during the day to get some of their business done at the transfer station in the evening. But then we would have to close early on Saturday. And in the summertime, our staff is indicating a lot of the transfer station customers are there early in the morning and it wanes as the day goes on. So we're trying to meet the needs of our consumers and our residents. And so we're talking about that to see if there might be the potential for summer hours. We'll get back to you on that once we make that final suggested change.
Okay.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the selectments meeting. Wait, Jim?
Yeah, sorry, just one more, one more for commentary. And this is going back to the training. We talked about doing the training in the second meeting in June. I knew that date struck in my memory and I had to double check it. That's actually the date that the Board of Ed is set for Portland High School graduation.
Okay.
I know typically as a board, we attend that. So I want to at least make you aware.
Thank you. Maybe what we'll do, Jim, is have a special meeting, not that night, but we'll look at our calendars and see if we can do a special meeting. Thank you for that note.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting to go back to the workshop?
So moved.
Thank you, Jim. Segmented by Rick Shar, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. It's 9:12.